Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'll call the Division of Clearhouse Board to order. I say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have all cell phones silent during the meeting. I look for the approval of the agenda. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. What was motion carries? Item five, public appearances and citizens comments. No debate will occur with the board on items introduced by citizens. Items will not be acted upon at this meeting, but will be referred to the proper staff or committee if action is required. Please keep comments to three minutes. Anyone like to speak?
I will.
Okay.
I'm real, I'm living with the Shalae Limehouse. I just want to make sure that everyone got a letter from me. In case you didn't, I do have a copy of it regarding the room tax. I know that that is on your agenda again this evening, and I would like to reiterate the importance of not raising the room tax. At the last meeting, it was brought up that bus companies don't care about the room tax. And I spoke to another bus company just this morning that does care about the room tax. And they care about every dollar that they spend in this community. I also have the support of other businesses in town, and as well as the numerous Chamber Board members, in agreement with us that raising the room tax would be detrimental to all of the businesses in town. I know that it directly impacts the hotels in town, but also it will definitely impact the other businesses as well. We work, we try to work exclusively with local companies for remodeling projects, which if we're going to see a decrease in our business, people won't be able to do that anymore. I know that Absolute Interiors wrote a nice email to the Chamber saying how much they value us working with them. We work closely with Hutch and Hyde in town for a lot of their furniture. And I know that these are big projects, but we take pride in everything that we have at our hotel. And I hope that you show that you also take pride in what our hotel brands and community as well. If you want to see the signatures that I have from other business members, I have those here. They were unable to come to the meeting tonight, but they all spoke very highly of supporting us in opposing the increase in the room tax. And I just really encourage you to not increase them.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, any non, I look for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item seven, tree board discussion consideration award of 2019 tree pruning removal contract.
I believe most, everything is in your agenda packet. We had, is it three bids? Three bids, with the low bid being Limbwalkers Tree Service. Now, the one change that we, and I believe we've talked about it within the notes, the one change we were going to make was, under the removal, option number two at a cost of $2,136.14 is basically the removal of a lot of the downtown trees. And, I think Joe is here. The Public Works Department can do those. So, they thought rather than spend the money with Limbwalkers, we could save that money to do maybe some other things, and the Public Works Department would take care of that. So, we would, the tree board is looking for approval of accepting the bid minus that one piece of it. So, it would include the pruning removal except for option two and the stump grinding. We did receive the appropriate certificate of insurance as well, so we're good to go on then.
I know that this is, I think we've never dealt with them before, have we?
It was a new name.
I think in the notes it said that once they had used the most required would go results. Yeah, Paul said. That was in the notes.
Yes. Okay.
In the minutes of the meeting. Okay, good.
I'll move approval of the contract to Limbwalkers Tree Removers, Tree Service LLC, for the tree removal, stump grinding, and pruning for this year. Minus option two. Minus minus option two.
All in favor, say aye.
Oh, oh, oh. I have a question.
Okay.
The tree removal, and I've talked to Joe firmly about this. Is that approved, is that the main street tree removal?
That the Public Works Department's going to do?
Give the option two piece of it, the $2,136.
But that, yeah, it's only the downtown trees that we have to take out.
Right.
Correct, Joe?
Yeah, they decided not to go with me on the other one, so they, okay, wanted the company to come in and do that.
Well, this isn't so much a budget question, but, and like I said, I talked to John firmly about this, but I forgot to ask. So, have all the trees come out?
They're all laid out.
On First Street and Fifth Street.
First and Fifth Avenue.
On First Street, all the way from Sixth to Fifth is coming out, but none of the trees in, from Fifth Street up to Second are coming out.
Oh, okay.
Fifth Avenue.
On Fifth Avenue, I'm sorry, on Fifth Avenue. None of them are coming out. I talked to Paul about that, he has nothing on that.
So, where exactly are they coming out?
From Fifth Avenue to Sixth Avenue on First Street. And then there's two on Second Street on top of the walls that I'm taking out too.
And they're infected?
I believe so. Yeah, Paul wanted them out, so I can do them myself.
No, I understand that part of it, I just want to make sure.
Something, is there also something with the size of the tree or something like that that's downtown that they need to come?
There are nasty noosees as far as the fruits that come off of them, but I guess I had it in the back of my mind that there was a possibility of taking out every other tree and planting, but if they're infected, it's probably not out.
Yeah, that's, that was kind of like Paul's thing up there. He just wants, he's got to get them out there.
Go ahead.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item eight, fire district board updating on future truck purchase.
Brad, did you want to go first? Help me out here. Well, there is a, there's a truck purchase coming up.
Yeah, there's a truck purchase looming in the future. We have to replace Engine Two, which is a 1996 Pierce 1250 gallon pumper. That would be replaced probably with delivery in 2020. By the time we start working on that now and the guys get the specs put together and so forth, we'll be looking at delivery during 2020. Dollar wise, probably $500,000 total, five to 550 for that truck.
Do you sell the old one?
Yes, and that will be sold to them.
Not the large though.
If you can, you know, if you can turn any dollars of all for profit, you're, you know, great. We lucked out when we sold Engine One, which was a Hurricane body with E1. And just dumb luck, when we bought it, we bought it with a transmission in it, with it could do pump and go. And so that truck then was converted into a pump and go phone. And that's why we were able to get the kind of dollars that we got for it. And I think we got around $30,000 for that. This truck, I know will bring that. If you ever want to compare used trucks for sale, go on Wisconsin Surplus Bidding, and you'll see what trucks are on there and what they are bringing in the current market. It's right up in Monhoram Lust, an auction service that we used to be. That is, that's kind of the final, if you can't get rid of a truck, that's the last turn you turn.
I know, rest in peace.
But we actually set back the purchase of that truck. Normally, we replace it 20 years. But because of the expansion of the station that we're doing, and that truck didn't pass certification this last year, we moved it back to 2020. Takes about six to nine months to build a truck. And it takes at least nine months or so to get your specs together and to make sure that you're able to, I'll keep a try and keep it in the budget. It's getting harder all the time.
There is a committee working on specs right now.
Yeah, the chief put together a committee, first came to the board, and which Barb and I are aware of. That replacement, as I mentioned, was put on hold. And now that it's, it's got to be done. It just passed tests, so. If it doesn't pass tests, guys, then we're really in trouble. That's about all I can say at this point about it. One thing I do want to say is that you all need to keep an eye on the expansion of the station, because it's going well. Guys are working over there all the time, they've done a lot. At this point in time, it's actually under budget. I think last night, if I'm not correct, it was total spent expenses at this point was $184,000.
I don't have a figure, but I know there's still money in the checkbook.
Yeah, we've still got money in the checkbook, so we're doing good. You know, if the rest of the government went like that, we'd be really happy. So, but that's, I, we need to forewarn you. And to start planning, that's all determined on equalized evaluation as to what the protective shares of that truck will be.
But you would expect this to be a budget item for 2020.
That's what payment would be, you know, coming us. What we did on the squad, we were able to save a significant amount of money is we were able to buy the, purchase the chassis and pay for it ahead of time. And then that was built on by the manufacturer. And that saved us, I think at that time, was six or seven percent. So.
Which is a lot.
We'll, we'll know better as we get into it as to what the actual savings is going to be. And no, somebody came up to, and I'll be honest with you, no, we're not looking at an aerial. An aerial is going to be about a million and a half, and we've got a lot of problems with training and maintenance, so as long as we can call Monroe, Monhoram, Pittsburgh, and everybody else in Dumbland.
They're not Monhoram.
No, we're not Monhoram.
They're not the other guys.
Yeah. Jugs, chrome wheels are gone. So, that's about all I have to offer.
Thank you, Brad.
Thanks, Brad. Can you call in how much the last, how much we had to budget for?
It seems like we did have a harrowing that was in Monhoram. It's under 200, but, and we did put $40,000 in this year in sinking. I'd have to look what the total in sinking is, but we did put some in.
And so what, roughly 40 some percent of the?
I would say, like you said, it's based on equalized at that given point in time. But I would say we're right in that neighborhood.
So that's around 200, 300.
Yeah. It's not like you don't know what's coming.
To give you a little background, Engine One, that we got 30 some thousand for when we sold it, originally cost us $97,000. So, that's over a period of, you know, 30 some year or 40 years, actually, I guess now. What a change.
Okay. Item nine, board visit discussion consideration ordinance 1804 amend hotel motel room tax.
I cannot see this. Well, I will say that I got, I had a phone call from one of the folks that signed us, and felt that they were, they were, didn't get all the information that they thought they were getting. And then, you know, I felt that they were led to believe that if we, you know, if the room tax raised would all go to the Shalae and historic village. I don't believe that's the case. Correct? Am I correct? I don't know, but that's, that's.
My understanding is that it's an application, like, yeah, just like the facade improvement. Correct? I mean, you would apply for that, it's not necessarily historic. Historic preservation, would that money be coming out of this? Let me think here. Would those grants be coming out of some of this? Okay.
You're both correct. We've discussed it two meetings already. It's documented in the minutes that the plan would be to initiate a process for which any property owner who owns a historic landmark or a historic property would be able to apply for the funds, which would be administered by the Historic Preservation Commission with approval by the Scottish Board. So, I agree with you, Barb, that I think that there was some information that was misrepresented in collecting these signatures and communicating with members of the Chamber and communicating with other local businesses. I also received communications about confusion related to the language and the intent behind the money.
You had some data last year. When was the last time we?
December 18th.
No, the last time we looked at room tax, was it what year?
Kay made a nominee, or a motion in 2016, which the Tourism Commission declined to vote on. You know, prior to that, I think it was discussed a few times, leading back to 2009, when it was actually changed.
Looking at 10 years.
I believe it was 2009 that it went from three percent to 5%.
I have a couple of questions, I don't know how to phrase it, but, just some scenarios. If we did not raise the room tax, could we still change policy? Where 75% of room tax went to tourism and 15 went to an improvement fund?
The answer is yes.
The answer is yes.
But one of the concerns that we have been consistently hearing from the folks in our audience is that they don't want money to be taken away from promotion and marketing. So, if we do not raise the room tax and we reallocate the distribution of those funds, the 90% cut which the Chamber gets would then be reduced to whatever we decide upon. So then they would see a decrease in their promotion and marketing funds. Raising the room tax and reallocating the distribution would divvy the money equally, so that the Chamber would not see decreases so long as the sales tax revenue remained at about 1.5%.
You have figures for different percentages.
I did.
Right. I noticed in one of the emails, there was a comment made that the Shalae of the Golden Fleece was a failing entity, and they did not want to support a failing entity. Worst case scenario, if nothing was done to the Shalae of the Golden Fleece, what would happen? Any thoughts of what would we do with that building? Or, I mean, I'm just trying.
Well, I think we have to make a decision about that building. We either, we either are going to maintain it and take care of it, or we're going to, we're going to have to sell.
Which we can't do.
Yes, we have.
Oh, what's the, we can sell it? Just a collection?
We fulfilled our obligation to, when Mr. Barlow gave it to the village.
Okay.
I don't, there have to be some things ironed out with the State Historical Society, I believe.
Yeah.
Because I think there's something.
You're correct, brother. We could sell the building to a private entity, to a corporation, et cetera, but all of the contents of the building would then become the property of the Historical Society of the State of Wisconsin. And all of the collection would likely then just be sold off for profit.
Well, since you brought that up, I had Lynn bring up some figures, just what it is, cost to taxpayers of this community for the Shalae. Starting in 2001 through 2004, we levied $71,489 to support the Shalae. Well, then levy limits come into play, so we didn't levy anything from 2005 through 2013. But they had a fund balance of $23,652. And then after 20, starting in 2014, we started levying again, and started all like at $4,500. And now we're up to, well, $7,400 this year. So, if you add all that up, including the fund balance that they had where we didn't levy no money, this village has put $125,548 in in 18 years to support that entity, tax dollars. And it's going to, right now, when we figured out the date, it's going to cost about $5,200 a year just to maintain that building. That's just maintenance. That's for the heat, lights, insurance, the alarm system. So, this is going to be on the back of the taxpayers if we keep this entity alive.
I'm not clear what the, what the $23,000.
That was, that was the fund balance they had.
That, yeah, at the end of 2004, they had a fund balance of that much money. And the board at that time decided to no longer levy for it. We lost guides, and it was basically closed. So, rather than levy for it, they said let's use the fund balance until it's gone.
Okay, so that got used up.
And so that.
That's why we had to start levying again in 2014.
Basically for the alarm and the utilities and that kind of stuff, and it lasted four years.
So, what'd you say, it was 100 or?
With the money that was levied, levied from 2001 to 2018, including with the fund balance.
But you can't really include that, because that was down money, wasn't it?
Well, it still comes up to 101,000.
Without this.
Without that. Okay? So, it's over 100,000 that the taxpayers of this village have done in 18 years to keep that alive.
So, I would like, just like I say, great information, thank you for sharing. But we are moving in a direction right now of having two separate discussions.
I know this is a discussion for LA.
Do you want to keep the Shalae alive?
Yeah.
Versus, do we want to increase the room tax to help sustain all historic properties in the village, not just the Shalae? Point of clarification.
So, I've, I've done some research on the issue. And in some ways, it's, it's a quagmire, because we're killing the goose that lays the golden egg, in a way. Because if we use those funds to support, you know, the funds from an increased tax, we could use those funds to support the buildings in the community that are historic, which bring the people to the community, which bring the people to the businesses and hotels. Okay, so that money can be used to support that. If that isn't the case, if we don't, now, there's two scenarios that I'm, I'm on both sides of the fence here. So, in a worst case, I shouldn't say worst case scenario. In that scenario, then, that money is used from the room tax, a certain percentage of that, to support those businesses, to support those entities that bring in those tourists. If we don't get any relief, then it falls back on the taxpayer. So, what we're necessarily looking for is not necessarily putting a wedge into the wheel of tourism, we're looking at some tax relief for the citizens. You know, I mean, the whole, we could go ahead and remove the Golden Fleece from, you know, I'm not much, I'm not bringing up the Golden Fleece at all at this point. I'm just looking at that. So, I looked up the largest markets in the US range from 10 and a half to 18.27, largest markets of room tax. I also read a research, a piece of research, I could pull it up, that said that increasing room tax did not have a dramatic effect on tourism. Now, I'm not saying that this is my opinion, I'm just saying this is what I have read. That there was some statistical research done over a period of 10 years, and they realized that it did not have an impact on tourism. And it was, I should have copied it down. So, my question then to all of us is, we're obviously not, we're obviously not making that decision of room tax to decrease tourism and to make it difficult for the entities that livelihood is off of tourism. But my question is, is do we want to provide the taxpayers some relief?
I think the taxpayer relief would be pretty minimal, though, actually.
Well, I mean, I'm thinking of the floral clock, you know, how we, you know, we had to pay for, for that, that one. And I don't even know, did we ever fix, we didn't fix it in its entirety, did we?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
Because if we fix it right now, it would fall apart.
Right.
So, it needs to be completed.
Oh, the sign we're talking about.
The sign.
The sign.
The sign.
You want the clock as the sign?
I'm talking about the clock.
That's done.
The clock. Okay. What was that cost, do you recall? I hate to, five or six thousand. But the sign needs to be replaced. I mean, there's always.
Something.
Something. So, I, it's a difficult decision. I mean, do we, you know, we empathize with our business owners and our hotels and motels, but we also empathize with the tax dollars. So, how do we make that bridge to make everyone happy with, you know, the outcome? How do we make the best comprehensive decision? Well, you know, it's, there's always two sides, you know, to everything. I mean, you blur this, it blurs without tourism, period. It costs us money, too. You know, it costs a lot of money to, to keep it looking, looking good. And, you know, I'm sure we have papers mounted, help set up and take down. Police protection and fire.
Police protection and fire, you know, fire. Roads and, roads and, you know, it's all wearing tear. But, you know, we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't have that issue if we didn't have tourists, so.
I also wonder, when you come up with those figures, they, and they said it didn't hurt the tourism. You know, I think there's a difference in markets, you know, little blurs if you go to-
Well, this wasn't a big market, it was just empirical data. That was just over a, a number of communities. It wasn't necessarily, you know, large cities. It was just a-
Okay.
But, you know, do you, do you recall, Sean, if there was a, a half or a one percent increase, what the revenue dollars would be for?
Yeah, I have all the figures.
He's got them, okay. I know you have them. I mean, when you, if you're looking at, if you're looking at dollars that are going to help to keep the structure, the infrastructure of tourism alive, that's, that's one thing. But then, like you said, if we're looking at landscaping and, and roads and, I mean, that's all, that's all a burden on the taxpayer.
Yeah.
To keep those going, to improve those roads, to keep, so.
And our hands are pretty much tied as far as budget, you know, increase. So.
So I can tell you that based upon the twenty seventeen revenue that was produced from the room tax, the estimated income was one point five three zero, seven two zero, so one and a half million dollars. Out of that, the room tax take that went to the Chamber was seventy-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-six. If the room tax was to be increased a half a percentage point, we would be looking at an increase of about seven thousand dollars, six, seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars. So that would be approximately eighty-two. If we raised it one percentage point to six, we'd be looking at an income of ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-three, which would be an increase of fifteen thousand, three hundred and seven dollars. And then if we increased it one and a half percentage points to six point five percent, it would be approximately ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars, which would be an increase of twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty. And if you want the amounts from a seven percent increase, those were in the break to be packet, I'm not gonna find them. So with a seven percent increase, we would be looking at, what the seven percent? Oh, sorry, two percent increase to seven percent, we'd be looking at approximately eighty thousand, three hundred and sixty-three to the Chamber with a seventy percent distribution and sixteen thousand, seventy-three dollars. Sorry, that's at a seventy-five percent distribution to Chamber. If we did a seventy-twenty split at seven percent, it would be the Chamber would remain relatively similar to where it was last year at about seventy-five thousand dollars in historic preservation and go up to twenty-one thousand, four hundred and some. So I know it's a controversial issue. I know that there's a lot of opposition from the business owners. And I'll just, again, reiterate that the intent behind the Historic Preservation's recommendation was never to harm any local business. And I think that it would probably be good for us as a committee to, or the village board, to consider a compromise in this situation. Perhaps seven percent might be too steep of an increase right out of the gate. So maybe it would be better if we had discussions around increasing one percentage point to six percent with the understanding that in one year's time, we could convene and affect, examine the effect on the local businesses and make a decision at that time whether or not we needed to revert back to five percent or if it would be okay to then raise to seven percent in one year's time from whenever we make the decision. That's where I stand on this issue.
I think that's a good thought, Sean.
I'm just, like, I'm coming from a standpoint of, you know, I never asked to be in charge of preserving the history of this village. And I'm in that position as a village board member, as somebody who's not from this community. But I took that responsibility on. And it's my job to try and do everything that I can to help preserve the historic landmarks in this village, and that's what I'm trying to do. So even a one percent increase, I think, would provide a little bit of relief, not only on the chalet, not only on the Swiss Historical Village, but on all of the local historic property owners, the village itself with repairs to the hotel sign, all of the other local landmarks that the village maintains and is responsible for on an annual basis. And to reiterate again, this is not designed specifically to direct all of the money that would go to Historic Preservation Commission to the Chalet of the Golden Fleece. Of course, as a historic property in the village, they would be eligible and able to apply for a percentage of the funds as needed. But they would need to demonstrate need, just like any other historic property.
So for the record, we would be creating, with this one percentage increase or however we decide, we would be creating a fund of which historical entities can apply.
The idea, correct.
Not the Golden Fleece.
Correct.
Particularly.
Correct. And the idea is that we, as a village board, would then institute that process whereby the Historic Preservation Commission would administer the funds and recommend decisions to the full village board for dispersment upon awards. We have not, of course, finalized any of that because why shouldn't we do that when there's room tax increases?
For another, another meeting.
Well, your proposal was to do one percent and then in one year revisit it.
If, for example, we were to approve a one percent increase tonight, I would then recommend that in one year's time, we evaluate any impact on the local businesses. And if there is a significant impact, then we would likely need to revert back to five percent. But if there is no significant impact, I would then recommend that we move to increase to seven percent.
Or leave it the same.
Or leave it the same, depending on the impact.
Yeah, decide we need to study it another year.
Yeah, just like we're doing with, just like we're doing with the library, we're forming an ad hoc committee. They're being responsible in their research, they're gonna make recommendations, same type of idea.
I'm just throwing this out as an idea. What if we took it at a smaller increment? What if we did a half a percent? And then reviewed it in six months? Is that too short a term, Franzen, or do we get a good?
I think six months from today would not give you an accurate presentation.
But you're not, you're not seeing the whole tour fee.
Yeah.
Yeah, we wouldn't even go into the whole search, you're right.
I think you need a whole twelve months to evaluate the impact. I'm sorry to make you nervous again, but can you tell me one percent one more time? I'm sorry. Yeah. I can't find it on the, I think, it's not there. Oh, okay. It's in my notes. So a one percent increase would equal approximately ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars in room tax revenue, which is an increase from twenty seventeen of fifteen thousand, three oh seven. And, you know, the distribution would be dependent on what we decide, it's seventy-twenty or seventy-five fifteen, so wherever that matters.
Why would we, oh, okay, I, my- So my understanding is, in one, whichever way this goes, if we did approve one percent in one year, one year from now, we would revisit, see the impact and could possibly revert that.
Go in a direction or go in a direction-
Certainly one approach, yes.
So Peggy, your other thought earlier was, so in this whole board business, you know, like where it goes through two proposed amendments, that really there are like two parts to the proposal, or two parts to the amendment.
Yeah.
You know, like a room tax percentage increase and a change in how we-
Policy.
In policy.
Correct. And we could change the policy without changing the room tax.
That's correct, but then we're taking money away from the rest proceeds.
But we're not, like, I feel like when, when we're hearing from, you know, the, like, the individual business owners, you know, or, or their concerns with how tourists would feel the impacts of this, like, that that policy change is less impactful on that part of it, but is the, like, big impact for our village residents? I don't know if that makes sense, but like, when I think about it as, you know how I talked last week, when I think about the policy change part of this, I think about it from a community development standpoint and an economic development standpoint, from sitting on that committee and how we've put in place those policies to create, you know, grant funds where people, you know, businesses can apply to improve, whether it be facilities or make improvements. And that's kind of how I view that, like, when you look at the ordinance, the, like, B portion of the proceeds, the policy part of the, of the ordinance.
The one percent increase, Sean, if seventy-five percent, if you split it seventy-five fifteen, seventy-five fifteen, you said it, what does it do to the chambers?
Well, I mean, it's seventy, it's something like that.
The one percent?
Yeah.
So ninety-one, eighty-three times-
Finances?
It would be, the Chamber would then receive sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two.
Which is what they had, what did they get this year?
It's about fifty thousand or less than what they received in twenty seventeen.
I think, as you mentioned before, we're talking about two different things here. The imposition of tax, I think this is the tax proceeds. I don't think they're entirely separate. As I said at the last meeting, I don't believe that one single business should have to bear the brunt of improving historic, a historic preservation, let me put it that way. The only one I know of that we're responsible for is Chalet of the Golden Fleece. And the amount of money that is collected through the room tax, twenty seventeen, that's, I guess, that's the latest I have, seventy-five, seventy-six thousand plus is no small amount of money.
Correct.
It's quite a large amount of money. I'm quite shocked when I found that out. I think we also have to consider that the reason these room taxes were set up and they were statutory by the state, filtered down to local municipalities, because for marketing, to bring people, tourists to the communities. There was obviously good reason for that, and I see no reason to break away from that. I don't think we are in any emergency situation as far as the chalet goes. We've, we've levied eighty, eight thousand, eight thousand, eighty-three dollars through two thousand nineteen in our budget. Maybe it seems like a lot of money at a given point to go over twenty years, but, you know, we spent almost five thousand dollars on baseballs and baseball bats for our rec program per year. So I think if you put that in perspective, I'm not saying we should plan on maintaining the chalet, you know, perpetually, but for right now, I don't think it's like an emergency situation. I know there are a lot of issues that have to take care of there. On the other hand, there is a friends group of the chalet. I don't know. We don't have their complete finances. We have the expenditures that we paid for and our, our levy, but they do things on their own that don't go through our, through our books.
Can you give an example of that?
Weimach, how he moved the village? I did. I don't know where that, I don't think it did.
No.
Or it should be.
We don't see anything, no report from anything.
But the friends group is Sandy, Lou, Mary, Stass, so I doubt they're keeping the money for themselves.
Denise, well, Denise wants to get it.
I don't think they're saying-
But I think the money goes back to the chalet.
Yeah, I'm sure it does. I'm not, I'm not saying. I, I, I'm, what I am saying is that we don't have complete accounting of-
They're through Vision, they're a nonprofit through Vision, so they have their finances there.
Right.
And it's monitored.
Exactly. So, so we do not have a complete accounting as a village board.
Not from the friends.
Exactly.
We have the accounting of what they pay staff, we get a budget from them for all of this.
I realize that, but we don't have complete accounting of where the money went. And, you know, there's a possibility that the finances are not as dire as we think they are. I, I know they're bad, I know it's in bad shape. But I'm not gonna make a decision as a village, as a, as a board member, or for that matter, parks committee member, which, which the chalet comes under, without complete information on how much money is actually out there. And it would also be beneficial to know if that amount of money, you know, could be, could be increased in the future.
Okay, that's a, that's a good idea. But I mean, is it, is your plan to ask for the financial data from every funds group in town that manages a profit organization?
No, just the one we levy money for.
But this isn't a specific, we're not asking for a policy change in regard to the Chalet of the Golden Fleece.
No.
Like, there's no, there's no language, we're not passing an ordinance for the Chalet of the Golden Fleece.
Okay.
So I don't understand why we keep, or I don't understand why we keep saying-
I think because initially when this came up, we all realized that that's what it was for, to, to help them maintain. Whether it was down the print or not, I think we know that.
That would be like saying that we created a revolving loan fund or a grant fund through CDA to support one specific business.
No.
We have how many historic properties in town?
One.
We only have one historic, we only have one property on the historic- We only have one historic, we only have one property on the historic preservation list?
One that we, one that we pay for.
There are 22.
That's you.
22.
We don't pay for the other 21.
Is Lynn, can you help us understand what the village is responsible for with regard to the historic landmarks in town?
The village is, any property that the village does not own, we are not responsible for any of the upkeep or anything on any of those historic properties.
But is the Chalais of the Golden Pleas the only historic property that the village is responsible for?
The floor clock.
The only historically designated property on that list of 22, the only one on that list of 22 that the village is responsible for is the Chalais.
The floor clock is not there?
You're right. The monument.
And the monument as well.
The suburbs monument, we would be responsible for that one. Something at the floor clock.
Which is also a floor clock.
I don't think that's on.
And again, but this isn't, but none of that matters, like, this isn't, this isn't a fund that says, shall be allocated for historic preservation and building maintenance and promotion for village-operated properties.
Okay.
Like, it's, it's not a fund that only village-owned and operated properties can apply to.
Okay.
Right?
Well, I-
I, I think it is, but-
Is it?
I guess we haven't looked at how we're, I mean, right now we have an ordinance in front of us that's about increasing the room tax and the distribution of that room tax. We haven't gone as far as what we're going to do with that addition. You know, the 15% shall be allocated to the village for, well, for historic building, preservation, maintenance, and promotion. I guess it is in there, that that's what it's going for. But how that is going to be managed is-
That's a separate ordinance that would be-
And there was something you said to talk about the state statute. The state statute has always said that, is it 30%? Can go, 30% of the collected tax by statute can go to the municipality for whatever they choose to use it for.
No, don't say that, it's just for, for general, general development. The initial, the initial statute, it was specifically for either marketing or-
Up to 37% room tax.
I, something like a convention center, which would, which would bring, obviously, and-
Would you read that again, please, Anthony, when you get to-
General municipal expenditures.
30% of it. So maybe, you know, another thing we could do would be to look at whether we want to change the allocation and then decide whether we should increase the tax or not.
For general municipal expenditures.
And use the municipal-
The umbrella for the general municipal, what would that cover? Obviously historic preservation, what else would be under that umbrella? As, as you, you know, we have to do such, it's pretty obvious to me that-
I think impact on the municipality due to tourism, as you brought up on the topic of that.
What page is that?
71.
Of last year?
No.
Our last month?
Or 71.
And while he's looking, I'll just say that I would be in favor of the compromise that you proposed, Chuck, that would go to 6% and then decide how to divide up.
The only thing that I would, I'm sorry, the only thing that I would, I think we need to go back and define that pool of money that is going to be allocated, because that's such a general term. If, if, if that's what we're going to do, if it's going to be 75, 15, 75, whatever, 25 or 15. And we don't know what we're designing, I think we need to step back and look at that. If it's not going to be under the umbrella of historic preservation, it's going to be under this, then I think we need to define what that is.
But how do you define general municipal expenditures? Like, doesn't that mean anything that the village would need to spend money on?
It would, and, and that would be a question for all of us. Is that something that we want to use it for, or do we want to narrow it and use it just for historic preservation? I think there's a lot of questions at this point, but I wasn't in a thinking of that.
Well, I would suggest we table this again. I'm going to, I'm going to move that we do so, but I still want to state that putting this, this tax on one specific type of business, which doesn't seem, it's, it's not fair. It's not fair. People come, yes, people come to stay in motels and NDBs and so on because of, because of tourism, but our tourism has changed so much. They come here to go to the brewery, they come here to drink, they come here to go to our festivals, which cost us a lot of money, and we haven't even gotten into looking into that as, as a more fair revenue for these purposes than, than a room tax. I don't for a minute believe that a, that a 1% or a 2% increase in room tax is going to harm, harm the motels or, or other people that, that pay this. I don't know for sure, I just don't believe it. But it's not fair, it's just not fair. If we were going to, if, if, to be fair, the people that benefit the most from the people coming here should be taxed. You know, we've got 12 bars in town, that's why people come here. It's not for the, you know, it's one bar for every six adults in this community, so it's, it's just not fair to place that burden on, on one business entity. If you, if you look at it that way, why don't we claim void of tax? The businesses that benefit from this, there isn't a way to do it. This seems just like an easy way out to me, but I just don't think it's fair that we would dictate an increase in, in the tax on a most specific business or something that isn't really bringing a lot of business to town.
On the flip side, Chuck, and I'm trying to go through this myself, is it fair to put that restorative burden on the taxpayer?
I, you know, that's another, that's, that's the second part of this question, and that's why I mentioned the Friends, that's why, that's why I'm suggesting tableing this. We're going to have to find another way to fund this, as far as I'm concerned. And these people already pay taxes through the number. They pay property tax, they do, they, they don't directly pay room tax, they have to collect it. It reflects on their, their price to their customers. So it's, it makes it difficult for them. And we do have two different situations, two different questions here. Room tax, the increase, and how are we going to pay, to be paying the Chalais? As of right now, I don't see any emergency as far as the Chalais is concerned. Part of my knowledge, not making, pipes aren't frozen, and we've funded it through, through this year. So I think we need to look into other ways to fund the upkeep of that. Or, God forbid, the possible disposition of the property. But I just don't see the increased room tax as the right thing to do.
I just wanted to clear on something, Sean, when you were proposing like a 1%, the chamber would end up getting less, was that correct?
About $8,000.
I really don't want to see that happen either.
That's certainly a possibility, that we could potentially not increase the room tax and just reallocate the distribution of the funds.
Which would decrease.
Yeah, would.
Make a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'll second, is it anybody else? But should we have some goals in mind of where we want to go with this before, you know, so we can, to separate the two out, or do I need to talk about the Chalais or talk about the room tax separately?
Well, I think that, you know, I mentioned looking into alternative means of funding, you know, the Chalais.
Because the Chalais is not part of this.
Not at all.
I mean, that's another, that's something different.
I'm sorry, but, but it does, even if it's not down on paper, that's why this came up. That's why, that's what the discussion was, the historic preservation. So, you know, let's, let's just throw that on the table.
Well, to correct you, it's not specifically related to the Chalais. The presentation I gave to the Tourism Commission on November 13th involved two five-year plans, one for the Chalais and one for the Swiss Historical Village. And in subsequent meetings, it was noted that our intent was to establish a process for all historic properties to be able to apply to the funds. So you're wrong in that you're thinking that it's all about the Chalais.
Okay, then I'm wrong. But I'm concerned with the Chalais because that's the one we're responsible for. We're not responsible for the historical building or any historic buildings in town. And I believe the floor clock will, it doesn't come out of the parks.
Yes.
So, well, I would just go on record as saying, if we are looking at ways to relinquish responsibility on behalf of the village for historic properties in the village, then we should disband the Historic Preservation Commission, because it doesn't make any sense to have it.
I don't think the Historic Preservation Commission was set up to fund historic properties.
But it's responsible for the maintenance and the aesthetics and any improvements that are made to any historic property in keeping it a period in which they're-
Only in approval, not financially. Well, I'm all concerned with the financial part at this time because we're discussing the tax.
I understand.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, if we do table it, then when does it, when does it become a point of discussion again, how it works?
Oh, you want the point to tie?
Well-
Obviously, we should, we should, it should be tabled. We can't table it indefinitely.
I mean, you could table it till July, but then you'll just hear a stronger argument from the local businesses that the impact will be greater because it's the height of the choice.
And if we're going to table it, then before it comes up again, I really think that, you know, there should be some alternatives on the table to discuss. What are some other alternatives? Let me ask this question, and I don't, I mean, it's, I, I don't, I'm just throwing it out there. If we did not have the issue of the Chalais of the Golden Pleas, would we be here discussing a room tax increase?
Sure.
No.
I think that's a fair question.
It is a fair question.
But I don't think that I can answer that question because the Historic Preservation Commission was discussing this prior to my taking over as chair. So the history of the argument can go back 10 years. So I, I don't know, but I think it's a fair question.
Yeah, I was going to say that too, because I think I've heard for quite a while that there are some folks who would like to see it increased, but we'd need to find out the history of that.
The other question I have is-
I mean, you can reference the opinion minutes from this board from December 4th, in which I included all of the Tourism Commission minutes from the past six years or seven years, and you can see the history of the discussion. It's always the same argument, marketing, marketing, but-
It would be interesting to also know why it was initially set up with the policy, you know, the part B of this being the way it was.
I think at the time, it was, my recollection of what I read through with the state documents was that it was the intent of the state to give the onus of delegating the money to the Tourism Commission. We're here talking about this because we govern the Tourism Commission, but the Tourism Commission made that decision when the room tax was initiated. And at the time, the chamber was likely the only entity that could serve in a promotional capacity for all of the businesses of its membership.
Yes, and what I'm, you know, what I'm, what I'm hearing from, apparently the Tourism Commission is that they don't care about the Chalais.
And I wouldn't say that, that that would be true. I think that the communications that we have received from members of the chamber and the Tourism Commission, and what they expressed in our November meeting, is that they feel that the funds should be used for a specific purpose that doesn't involve updates to properties that are physical in nature. I have always gotten the, you know, the understanding from the Tourism Commission that they just feel that the money should go into promotional marketing.
All right.
I've never heard any one say, you can't use it further than that, but there was a, there was a memo that was passed around at the November meeting, I believe Mike Bell brought it, and it was in your packet from December 4th. But that was from the Wisconsin Lodging Association.
We'll see if we have more questions and we have answers. You know, can I have? I was thinking if, if we did not have the Chalais as our burden, so to speak, would we be having this discussion too? That's the other flip side.
Well, that's a good question.
Well, you asked that already.
Because, well, I was thinking of more in terms of-
My question then would be, yeah, the second part of that policy would be, would we be discussing as a village how we spend room tax proceeds?
I mean, the first question, the second question was if we didn't have the building. The first question was if, if we didn't have the financial burden. So I guess in a sense it is kind of the same question, but it's-
Well, I think we've been through that three times, that's all.
Okay, we have a motion, a second? All in favor for tableing? All in favor is the aye?
Aye.
Aye.
A vote?
May.
So we're hearing five and two?
Are there three ayes?
And were there five? I didn't vote.
So do we all vote all of them?
Yeah.
Okay, Barb?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Anthony?
I'm going to vote to table it.
So yes?
Yes.
Peggy?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Chuck?
Aye.
Petra?
No.
And Roger?
Yes.
Which one carried four, three?
Okay. Can I ask a question on, I have a legal question before we would discuss this again. And I don't know who we like ask legal questions of now.
We have attorney.
Well, so. I don't know how many of you have this in front of you, but. So this says that, you know, like we can retain thirty percent. But it says, the clause requires a municipality to continue to retain less than thirty percent of collected room tax revenues if it was doing so as of May thirteenth, nineteen ninety-four. It says that in two thousand and fifteen, when the legislature passed Wisconsin Act fifteen, that the governor modified the bill through a partial veto. And it's understood that through that partial veto.
What was the date again?
May ninety-four.
May thirteenth, nineteen ninety-four, that through the partial veto, unless you were collecting. Prior, it requires a municipality to continue to retain less than thirty percent of collected room tax revenues if it was doing so as of May thirteenth, nineteen ninety-four.
But we were collecting then.
Correct. But even if we were, nothing that you've been talking about would be in violation of that. You know, we're not talking about taking thirty percent.
Right.
Right.
Well.
What's the legal question?
My question is, is can we increase the amount that we are retaining as a, as a village under the current.
As long as it's not.
Under the current law.
As long as it's not thirty percent, I think.
So it says.
I think as long as it's not thirty point zero one percent. Anything above thirty would be.
Beginning with the room taxes collected on January first, two thousand and seventeen, Act fifty-five creates a cap on the amount of room tax revenues that a municipality, subject to the nineteen ninety-four grandfather clause, may retain for purposes other than tourism promotion and tourism development.
So are we looking for legal opinion from the village attorney at some point or not yet?
I think, I don't think, I think we can find that.
It says an affected municipality will be able to retain only the same dollar amount of room tax that it retained in fiscal year twenty-ten or thirty percent of its current room rev tax revenues, whichever is greater.
Thirty percent, yeah.
But then down below is where then it says, you know, like, but you have to be, have been doing that.
But are you.
As of.
Have you gone through the whole?
I don't know. I just wanna make sure that, like, we're not gonna like spend all this time.
Yeah.
Trying to make a plan and.
Well, I don't recall if it was on December fourth when I originally brought this to the table order, if it was on the eighteen. But I did make a comment at one of those meetings that I had been in contact with the Wisconsin Department of Revenue and spoken with Deborah Werner Kellm. And she guided me through that memo and answered the specific questions that you've all asked tonight. And the answer is yes, thirty percent is.
Legal.
From the beginning.
No, and we can do whatever the hell we want, but.
Okay.
I think it's sort of explained on the papers, you know, such and such.
Is there any more on this? Now, we're gonna move on to the president's report. Um, I don't know if all of you are aware, we've got three positions open for trustee and only one person running. So we're gonna have two open spots. So if anybody knows of any one that come wrangling that could be appointed.
Wait, that was me?
You're running.
Another one running.
You're the one running.
Anthony and Anthony.
And Barb are not, and nobody else is running. Mark Pauli is running for president against me. But that's the only ones we have on the ballot.
Um, so we mentioned appointment, but just, I'm gonna have Lynn clarify this. If somebody runs as a write-in, they have to register just like the rest of us, right?
Yep.
Oh.
Oh.
If you're a registered write-in, however, if there are not enough names on the ballot for the number of offices that need to be filled, the election officials that night will count every single write-in candidate. So if someone who is not a registered write-in candidate gets a sufficient number, or well, whatever that number is, because there's not.
But.
They, we would then have to contact them and say that.
But if someone takes out a, an ad in the, in the, we don't have it in the paper, but if, if someone takes out an ad in a shopper or the radio or.
They should be registered. They should not be spending money on a candidate unless they are a registered candidate.
That's an actual declaration.
Right.
Um, right?
Right.
So they have to file with you.
Correct.
To be a legal candidate.
And then if at the poll in place that day, people come in and say, do you have any registered write-in candidates? Then the poll workers are able to tell them who they are.
Oh, okay.
We can't post that anywhere or tell the poll, but if they're asked, they're told.
Well. I'm sure your wife, wife and daughter, Bart, you said, you had a town that they was.
No, there. I'm happy you're here to help count at the end of the night.
Oh, there's one other thing I wanted to say that Joel's gonna have to update us on this. I don't know if anybody or everybody on the board knew that we had a little fire down in Wastewater Treatment Plant. Basically, it was a trash container that somehow caught on fire, it was plastic, and it just smoked up a couple rooms. So we had to have a company come in and clean it out. Joel, do you want to give a little update on that, please?
The company's cleaning it.
You can come up.
Um, they're cleaning up the building where it was at. We have no structural damage. No major computer damage, no major electrical damage. Did melt a little bit of light fixtures, so we're gonna have Clark go in and look at that. So otherwise from that, the company has been in there since Friday. So we had it on the second, so the third, fourth, and they already have the walls primed. You can walk on the floor again where the, all the chemical was, it spilled when we had the fire. There was a little jug in there, a polymer that spilled. And like four ounces of that, a hundred gallons of water doesn't wash away. So it got pretty messy, but we got that all cleaned up. And they figure probably within a week to a week and a half, they should have everything pretty much.
I assume we have in terms of conversation.
We do.
It's done filed.
Yep, we do, yeah. So that's where we're sitting.
Okay. Didn't affect the operations?
No, the plant never shut down whatsoever. They were, they actually never put it on fire. I was there when it happened. It, I was assaulting the other operator. And I would literally watch the operator walk up to the building, kinda look at the building, kinda funny. And he walked up to the door, opened the door, closed the door again. So I stopped and that was the night.
What time of day was that?
That was in the morning, like ten minutes after seven, quarter after seven. But we have no idea. What?
The clause did. Hmm.
We have no idea. We had inspectors, we had our insurance people come in. They said there's nothing there. Two inspector, we'll just get it all wrong, get you guys back up and going. That's where we're at.
Okay. Thanks, Joel. One other thing, as of Friday, we've got fourteen applicants for the administrator's position. And they're due on the twenty-third, so. Finance personnel will be meeting on the thirty-first with PAA to go over the applicant applications. They'll tell us what they think is good and bad.
Does, does PAA rate these people?
Yeah. Yeah.
It's really, it's really.
I mean, right off the bat, once they get the applicants, they, they will rank them somehow?
Yeah. Yeah. Any further business?
Yeah, I was just wondering. So situations and circumstances in my life have changed. And I just handed Roger a letter informing him, as well as all of you, that I'm resigning from my position on the board, as well as my position as chair of the Historic Preservation Commission as soon as this meeting is adjourned. I don't really wanna talk about it any further than now, but I've been answering the questions outside of the building. If anybody has any.
So are you there, Sean?
Who am I?
Yeah, you put a lot into this in a short time.
Okay.
We are adjourned.
Another spot, yeah.
So, sorry. Still have the emails.
I was looking at those.
Actually, you should try.
How do I turn it off?
Rob gave all of us a bag of black walnuts. Called a Christmas box, and so I use black walnuts.
No.
No, thank you.